Hello, everybody. It's my pleasure to welcome you all tonight on this September 25th, 2018, Tuesday. The time is 6:31, and I welcome everyone here and everyone at home to the Alice City Council Meeting. To open the meeting, invocation by Elias Vasquez, First Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our newest member of our city staff, Ms. Oden.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for inviting me to bring the invocation. I like to share a scripture verse always with the people who invite me, and it's in First Timothy, Chapter 1. It says, "I urge, first of all, that petitions, prayers, requests, and thanksgivings be offered for everyone, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all holiness and godliness." Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts. Lord, you are a good God, you are merciful and kind to us. You treat us better than we deserve. Thank you for allowing us to share tonight, bring these leaders together to make decisions for their community, for our community, Lord. We need you to guide us with wisdom and understanding. Let us be compassionate and kind, patient, and wise as we make these decisions for our community, Lord. Your people depend on us, the leaders, to do what is fair and just. So bless these leaders here. Guide them with your Spirit and help us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen comments. It seems as though we have none tonight. We'll go ahead and move on to public announcements. Ms. Carrasco?
None today.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Molina?
None.
Okay. I've got just a couple of things I wanted to put out there. First, to the citizens out there, please keep an eye out for any changes that may occur in regards to forthcoming council meetings. Some of the members of council and hopefully some members of staff will be attending the TML Conference in Fort Worth next month, beginning of next month. This is a chance for us to go to these events and learn a few things, hopefully find a few ways that we can get some additional monies, find resources for projects that we need, and just interact with other members and find out the ways that they were able to pull things off by our community. So, you know, I ask that you keep us in your thoughts and prayers for travel and hopefully that we gain some knowledge while we're up there. Aside from that, we'll move on to item number three. Consider an act upon approval of city council minutes for the September 11, 2018, city council meeting. I believe we were handed a new set that's separate from the packet with just a few Anyone?
I'll move for approval of the minutes of the September 11, 2018, city council meeting.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Minutes are accepted as motioned. All right. Moving on to item number four. Oh, sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. I was reading over the minutes. Put that out of the way so I don't do that again. Item number four, the council may enter into closed executive session to discuss the following pursuant to A. Section 551.0712, Texas Government Code Attorney Consultation to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations arising out of the labor negotiations undertaken pursuant to Chapter 174, Texas Local Government Code between the City of Alice, Texas, and the duly-recognized majority bargaining agent for the city's firefighter personnel and ratification of tentative agreement by the association. B. Section 551 dot 0871, Texas Government Code Economic Development to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the government body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the government body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. The time is now 6:36. We will now enter into executive session. The Alice City Council has returned to open session at, it is, the time is 7:30. Item number five, return to open session, deliberate, consider, and take any action necessary as a result of discussion in the immediately preceding agenda item number four. Council?
Yes, I'd like to move for, I make a motion for the ratification of the collective bargaining labor agreement between the City of Alice, Texas, and the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 4102, for fiscal year 2018-19 through fiscal year 2020-21.
We have a motion, council?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well? We'll move on to item number six. Discuss, consider, and act upon adopting a resolution authorizing submittal of an application for financial assistance not to exceed 5.5 million to the Texas Water Board, I'm sorry, to the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing city manager as the city's authorized representative for furnishing such information and executing such documents as may be required to prepare and submit the application, authorizing the city's financial advisor and bond consul to aid and assist in the preparation and submission of such applications, and to appear on behalf of and present the city before an hearing held by the TWDB. Mr. Sparza?
Yeah, Mayor Protam, thank you. This is the Texas Water Development Board loan application for looking at an additional source of water, and Ms. Barbara Reeves is going to be addressing this, and Demetio will be addressing this item, and the next two items after this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few meetings ago, we discussed two projects that were submitted to Texas Water Development Board for financial assistance. One, under the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, is the groundwater project, which is the subject of this agenda item, and that was with Alice Water Authority as the applicant. The second project submitted to Texas Water Development Board is under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and that's our wastewater collection infrastructure improvement program project that's currently underway, and that's with the city as the applicant. The groundwater project, which was submitted on behalf of AWA, consists of three test wells, one 1.5 MGD production well, and a pilot plant with three modular units totaling one MGD total. And this project is designed to give us an additional source of drinking water in addition to the surface water that we purchased from Corpus Christi. This project was invited, was on the initial invited list from Texas Water Development Board, and last month, we received an invitation to apply. The application is due October 5th. This project does qualify for some loan forgiveness.
Potential loan forgiveness.
Potential, thank you, potential loan forgiveness. And if the loan application goes in after the deadline, the potential loan forgiveness may not be available. As we've worked with, on the loan application, and worked with the financial advisor for both the city and Alice Water Authority, it has been identified that the city has more financing options than Alice Water Authority with regard to the pledge for the loan. So that's why we're bringing this project to you tonight, to ask for your authorization for the city to be the applicant on this loan application in lieu of Alice Water Authority.
And we checked with the Water Development Board and Bond Counsel, and especially Water Development Board, and they didn't have a problem with that. They said that's fine by changing the name of the applicant. It does give us more flexibility. The Water Authority doesn't really have revenue like we do when it comes to water sales and things of that sort. So it's, this is the same item that you all had before, we're just wanting to submit it on behalf of the city of Alice.
Council? Okay. I did have one quick statement in regards to the application. Considering the presence, we do have to update the application correct of who's, the way it's stated there. It's been prefilled out, and that's the, you know, the section one where it talks about the members of council that are present. I just want to make sure if we apply, if we turn in this application, that they can't say, "No, that's not who was there," or "That's not who wasn't there."
Yeah.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Because if we're voting tonight, we are short one member of council, so we need to make sure that we update it.
Yes, 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 sir.
Okay. And I'm sure she would agree with council regardless, but we just need to make sure we handle this properly. All right, council? If there's no questions or comments, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, I'd like to move for authorizing submission of an application for financial assistance not to exceed 5.5 million to the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing city manager as the city's authorized representative for furnishing such information for grant approval, as presented.
Have a second. Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven. Discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing staff to issue, publish, a request for qualifications, RFQ, for engineer, financial advisor, and for bond consul to assist in the Texas Water Development Board, TWDB, application for financial assistance and project implementation through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, and through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF. Mr. Sparza?
Yeah, this is also, we are, this agenda allows us to get reimbursed from the funds for the engineering, I mean, for the, this is the bond counsel, for the engineering, the FA, financial advisor, and the bond counsel. And if we didn't do this, we would have to pay for those things out of pocket, and so this is a common secondary item. It just matches item number six as far as what we're doing. So it's, we need to do the proper process that the Texas Water Development Board wants to see when it comes to the postings, the timeframes, and the RFQs that we do for those three contractors that we're going to need.
No questions? If I have no questions or comments at this time, I'll take a motion.
Yes, I'd like to move for, I make a motion authorizing staff to issue and publish a request for qualifications, RFQs for engineer, financial advisor, and bond counsel to assist with submission of the Texas Water Development Board applications for financial assistance and project implementation and all related components, as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon selection review committee's recommendation regarding hiring an engineer, engineering firm pursuant to RFQ number 2018-09-06 for pre-award, post-award engineering services for hazard mitigation assistance, HMA, contracts if awarded for the Texas Division of Energy Management, TDEM, and/or Texas Water Development Board, TWDM. Mr. Sparza?
Mayor Protam, this is a kind of continuation of the Hurricane Harvey disaster declaration grant that we're looking to get, and Ms. Barbara Reeves is going to expand on it.
Mayor and council, during the August 14 city council meeting, we were authorized to issue this RFQ. It was published in the local paper, August 26, and emailed to five firms listed on one of the comptrollers lists, and there, this particular funding source requires that at least a couple of those firms that are sent the RFQ are hubs, and so following that direction from Grant Works, we did that. We received one statement of qualifications from an engineering firm. That SOQ was evaluated by a committee. The committee is Mayor Vanover, Fire Chief Patrick Thomas, our engineer, from our engineering department, Joe Salisbury, and Esteban Getta, and myself. The committee is recommending that you authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm that submitted the SOQ. That firm is LNV, and that the authorization be to negotiate a contract with LNV for pre-award and post-award engineering services for hazard mitigation assistance contracts if awarded from the Texas Department of Emergency Management and/or from the Texas Water Development Board. And currently, Patrick and I are working on a project to submit to Grant Works for generators, four fixed or permanent generators in two porters, and we need an engineering, we need engineering services to do such things as determine the size of the generator, the capacity, et cetera, cost. Grant Works has advised that after the initial NOI or notice of intent is submitted, that the full-blown application would be due the end of October.
Any questions, comments?
No questions.
If we have none at this time, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move for approval of, approval and accept the selection and review committee's recommendation regarding hiring of an engineering firm pursuant to RFQ number 2018-0906 for pre-award and post-award engineering services for the hazard mitigation assistance contracts if awarded from the Texas Division of Emergency Management and/or the Texas Water Development Board.
And to negotiate with LNV engineering?
And to negotiate with LNV engineering.
Staff, that was staff recommendation?
Based on staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion stands as stated, or reproved as stated? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item number nine. Consider an act upon authorizing staff to issue, publish, a request for qualification, RFQ, for the purpose of engaging in consulting, consultant, engaging a consultant to assist the city of Alice with market, marketing handling and placement of adequate insurance coverages for the city of Alice's 2018 coverage renewal at the most economical cost for the city of Alice's property liability, casualty, workers' compensation, errors and emissions, and other lines of coverage. Sparza?
Yes, Mayor Protam, thank you. What we're trying to do is, I don't remember us ever going out to the marketplace for some of the additional lines of coverage we have, like the property and casualty, E&amp;O, and those things. So I'd like to get an RFQ out, to see what's out there as far as the consultants can go, and to see what we can get, and how much it's going to cost. And there's a lot of things that we do in-house that take up a lot of time also, and if we have a firm similar to how we do our health insurance benefits, that'll do the processing work, that'll do the work to go out for bids and figure out what's best for us, I think it'd bring a lot of value to the city of Alice and potentially save us some money when it comes to our insurance coverage. You know, we have errors and emissions, we have property, we have automobiles, we have a lot of large, a lot of equipment, and so it would really be beneficial to be able to engage an outside firm to help us control those costs and see what's out there. So this is merely the RFQ to get out, to see who can help us on that.
I'm just surprised, I'll, like, council, if they have any questions or comments first? I'm just surprised that this has never really been out there. We've always kind of reached out for health, we've reached out for other things, and the fact that this being an insurance base also has never been approached. I'm happy that we're moving in that direction now, so thank you for taking the initiative to move, and hopefully we can save some dollars. Yes, we have to hire a consultant, but that consultant fee should be covered by the savings, hopefully supplied by the service provided. So, having said that, council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to move for authorizing.
Well, hold on, hold on, I think she had, I think she had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies.
I just had a question in reference to the first part. It says consultant to assist in the city of Alice with marketing. What would they do as far as that?
Well, no, I mean, and that's, we use that wording with, that we pull that off from the health insurance benefits. It's not necessarily, I mean, it's not necessarily the marketing, but it's assisting us with finding the additional carrier, so that's, that we're just kind of throwing in there. Yeah.
Really their search for people wanting to sell us something.
Yeah, they're finding the clients, right.
Smart management.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments before we move to a motion?
Go.
All right, we're good. Motion, please.
Yes, I'd like to move to authorize the staff to issue and publish a request for qualifications, RFQ, for the purpose of engaging consultancy to assist the city of Alice with marketing handling and placement of adequate insurance coverages for the city of Alice's 2018 coverage renewal as the most economical cost for the city of Alice regarding property liability, casualty, workers' compensation, errors and emissions, and other lines of coverage.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated? All right. Moving on to item number 10. Consider an act upon adopting a resolution of the city of Alice, Texas, adopting written policies for increasing the threshold for the capitalization of fixed assets. Mr. Ramos?
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council. The city of Alice utilizes the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is Gatsby's definition of capital assets. Capital asset basically is a real personal property that has an estimated life of greater than one year, and it includes land and land improvements which are capitalized regardless of the dollar amount. We have easements, buildings, vehicles, machinery and equipment, works of art, and historical treasures, and infrastructure. Generally, these assets are used for operations and have a useful life of greater than, or at least three years. The threshold for capitalizing these assets right now is $1,200. Anything over $1,200, we capitalize or depreciate. In order for it to be capitalized, the asset must increase the capacity, the functionality, or extend the useful life of the asset. Presently, like I said, we're doing $1,200, and we're recommending that that be increased to $5,000. The smaller dollar amount, sometimes the asset doesn't even live the useful life of three years, so that's one of the reasons that we want to increase it to $5,000. Also, it was a recommendation by the auditors that we do this also. So that's the recommendation, to increase it from $1,200 to $5,000.
The state recognizes that higher $5,000 amount, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Counsel?
I was wondering if it was a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. No questions? No questions? Okay. If there's no questions, I'll accept the motion at this time.
Yes, I would like to make motion for approval on adopting, the city of Alice adopting written policies for increasing the threshold for the capitalization of fixed assets.
We have a motion?
Do we have a second?
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or any opposed? All right, motion stands as stated. Item number 11. Discuss, consider, and act upon establishment, dissolution, appointment, reappointment, removals, and/or term classifications of membership for the city of Alice boards, commissions, and committees, specifically Alice Water Authority.
Yeah, Mayor Protam, what we, the Water Authority is a board that's a five-person board that's appointed by the city council. You know that Mr. Bill Finley, who recently passed away, was one of the founding members of the Alice Water Authority. He also brought that experience of the larger business experience, second to the school district, the largest employer in town, and also he may employ people in a lot of other cities and also other states. So it's a larger business perspective that he brought. That board is a pretty diverse board. There's an engineer on there, an attorney, a business person, a retired banker, and Mr. Finley was the kind of the person that brought that larger business aspect to there. And the Water Authority respectfully asked you guys would consider Mr. Steve Finley to replace Mr. Bill Finley. Happens to be his son, of course, but he has the same, he's been running Fesco for a long time already, and brings that same bigger business acumen and experience and bigger picture ideas to there, so it'd be a very good fit. And on his own right, he's a very good fit to there. He just happens to be Mr. Bill Finley's son. But they would respectfully ask you guys to consider him for an appointment. And I did visit with Mr. Steve Finley. He said he would be honored to be on the board, he would give it all he had, like his dad did.
Counsel, on mine, I'd like to make a quick statement. I actually spoke to Robert McIntyre, he's on the board as well. He called me and said that the board met. They voted unanimously, unanimously to consider, for us to consider. Of course, they cannot tell us who to appoint, but they did make a recommendation of him. I had told Robert at the time, I said, "He was really one of the people that I considered." He worked very closely with his father. It was not, he was not in consideration because he was Mr. Finley's son, but he was in consideration, in my opinion, because he was Mr. Finley's son. By that, I mean, he's cut from the same cloth. Mr. Finley taught, you know, taught him how to do business at Fesco the same way. You're talking huge dollar amounts when you're dealing with loans and stuff like that. We have another businessman on there, in Robert McIntyre, and, you know, he himself said, "Hey, I bring the smaller approach to business," and he brought the big approach to business. You know, when I looked at these dollar amounts for these applications of $5.5 million, it was insane in his mind, but it was simply business to Mr. Finley, and Steve brings that same perspective. So it would be my recommendation as well to accept their recommendation and move forward with Mr. Steve Finley, so.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of appointment of Mr. Steve Finley to the Alice Water Authority Board.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well? Any opposed? Motion carries as stated? Thank you very much. Agenda item number 12. Adjourn or consider act upon adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Good evening.[1773.12]